Winter evening. Thank you for getting out. And Nathan Kingsley, we especially thank you for coming tonight to offer the invocation.
Thank you. My thanks to you. Appreciate our counsel. Appreciate our time. Thank you. Father, as you know, just reading today from Peter's letter to obey the authorities and give honor to them, and you're entrusted with your authority, we thank you for those who have taken up that role. Thank you for our mayor and for our council, and give them wisdom to make decisions tonight. May it be of benefit to those of us who live here. So we thank you for their role. Give them wisdom, grace to do it. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, by my watch, it's seven o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order and ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take roll call, please?
Here.
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 Mike Connell.
Here.
Chip Fuller.
Buck Porter.
Here.
Kena Dunn.
Here.
Jacob Pepper.
Here.
Thank you. Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per.
We have a motion for Mike seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now reading an approval of the minutes of our meeting of February 1st.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the February 1st, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any pre-approved reports or presentations for tonight, so moving into public comment. I don't see that we have any of that either. So communications, Shirley, do you have any communications for us?
I don't have any communications, but I just wanted to remind everyone of the open seats. Mayor, two-year seat. Larry, Jake, and Bob, is it? I think, okay, four-year seat. And then Kena's seat is open for two years, so just wanted to remind everybody about that.
So we have council seats and a mayor seat that will be open for anyone that's interested in running for those positions. You'd have to pick up a petition from Shirley. You have to circulate your petition, obtain up to 30 signatures. You have to have at least 15, and then you turn that back in to Shirley, and then she checks to make sure all of those people are voters in the city. And then you are notified from the county office, actually, that you're going to be placed on the ballot. So if you're interested, if you have questions, just call Dr. Shirley. She'd be happy to explain it. Any other things about election or anything like that we should let people know?
Nine-day early election starts. I believe it starts on the 18th. I don't know the exact date. I'm sorry. I don't have that with me. It is on the door, though. And then February 27th will be the primary down here, and that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any communications they want to share? Mayor report. I do have a communication, an email from Jeremy Blatt, who is Alyssa Slotkin's, Congresswoman Alyssa Slotkin's aide. If you'll recall, I told you that they were assisting us with locating a grant for us to apply for to try to get some money to help us cover the expenses related to our tornado cleanup. And we thought we found one that would work well for us. And he sent me an email and said, "I'm sorry I didn't respond with better news, but we don't qualify for that grant." It was one that was directed only to housing, privately owned housing, not community-owned buildings. So he said, "I'm hopeful we'll be able to get the city the necessary funds through the state FY25", which is the fiscal year 2025 budget. So we'll keep in touch, but that one's a no-go. I don't have anything else. Do we have any committees that want to report?
Not a committee, per se, but I'll give the group a quick update of the Planning Commission activities specifically around the master plan draft. I think I mentioned that we were getting that from McKenna, the company that we're working with, to get us a hand in getting that plan updated. We have received that. The Planning Commission members have reviewed, made comments, along with Sue made some comments. Those have been sent back to McKenna for an update and some planned revisions to the draft. And it's on a timetable to have it back to the Planning Commission before their next meeting, which I believe is March the 4th. Ultimately, once the Planning Commission is comfortable with it, it will come to council for our review and approval. Subsequent to that, it gets out to the public for, make it, it's like 63 days or some odd number, but it's over two months that the public will have the opportunity to provide input.
It is kind of a lengthy thing, like 50 pages, maybe. So do you think we could have that when the draft revision is done and before it's going to come to council, emailed out to them so they can have time to really read it?
And I'm going to be so bold as to make a suggestion. We don't need to agree to it right now. Given the detail, given the level of proposed action plans in it, I'd like to have us think about whether or not, once we get that, everyone takes a chance to look at it, if we consider a separate, special review, like we'll be doing for the budget, but this would be focused on the master plan, to make certain everybody's understanding and buying into what we ultimately put out to the public for potential actions.
Do you think that would be beneficial if we had council and the Planning Commission meet together?
That was a note that I made myself a question. When we get to that point, we'll see whether or not we want to include and have a joint meeting. It really is setting the, in my mind, setting the stage for what the city wants to do here in the coming years. So the more effort and time we put into getting it as right as we know how to make it, the greater the benefit will be.
Very good. Thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions for Larry, any other comments? Any other committee reports? Looking then for a presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and the payment be authorized. Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jake. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We do not have any old business tonight, so we'll move into new business. And that takes us right into a couple of appointments to the Planning Commission. Genevieve Cottrell and Jared Lidle, who both have been serving on the Planning Commission, terms expire in January, and they have let me know that they'd be willing to continue to serve. So I am appointing tonight Genevieve Cottrell and Jared Lidle to the Planning Commission. Each of their terms would expire in 2025, but I do have to have separate motions if you are wanting to approve them.
I move that we approve the mayor's reappointment of Genevieve Cottrell to the Planning Commission with the term expiring January 1st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Bob. Everyone in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And also I need a motion for the appointment regarding Jared Lidle.
I move that we approve the mayor's reappointment of Jared Lidle to the Planning Commission with the term expiring January 1st, 2025.
Second.
Motion from Larry seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So moving right along, we're into another new business item, the possible approval of migration with VC3. And Kyle is here tonight to talk to us about that.
Good evening. Shirley begged me to take this over. So probably two-plus years ago, Devin and I started a conversation with then-IT Wright about moving our email platform from the current surge web that it is to something that's a little bit more or a lot more updated than what we currently have. We find some issues, probably some security issues with our email. Not all emails get through all the time. I had some significant conflict with my email and the school's email last year, and we were not able to communicate very clearly with some people. Anyway, that being said, the solution that Devin and I were working on was migrating to Microsoft 365 for our email. You can, the sky is the limit as far as Microsoft 365 and what you can do with it. This is pretty much just the base platform for Microsoft and our emails. We would keep all the same emails. A lot of the costs that you're looking at that's in front of you is the migration of what we currently have to Microsoft. So they take care of a lot of that. There is monthly charge through Microsoft, and unfortunately, it is billed monthly, which I was told right up front because a lot of places don't like that, which I told them we don't like that either, but it's not a choice. So this was actually far enough along in the planning stages that Devin and I had put money in the budget for this budget cycle to do this project. Obviously, with her passing, we took some time to reevaluate what we were doing, but this is kind of where we're at as far as this project goes. So VC3 now is going to be the ones that are taking this over because that's who our IT contract is through.
And they'll do a seamless transfer, so we won't have to do anything on our end.
That is a wonderful idea you have. And I'm certainly hopeful for that, but I made no promises, and I highly doubt that they would also. But they've done this before, and so I believe this is the best setup to get that as seamless as possible.
As possible.
Yes.
We won't have to necessarily, that you know of, like have to completely delete or whatever that one and go into something else.
I do not believe that.
Okay.
I'm hoping that we wake up one day and it just is different.
Appears.
Right.
It's good to have goals.
Yes. Hope is good. Hope is good. Yes, exactly. For sure.
Any other questions for Kyle?
I don't know that I have any more answers for yet.
I move that we approve the email migration with VC3 in the month not to exceed $3,620 to perform the email migration. We also approve the additional $275 per month for the maintenance fee. We authorize the chief of police and/or the clerk to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The SEDP has let us know that it's time to reinvest in them. We have been having an annual investment of what they term a sustaining level, which is $1,000. It does provide us with a lot of information, a lot of benefits, a lot of help when we needed it for various things. And Shirley did put the information they sent to us in your packets. So if you need a few minutes to look at that, feel free.
Do we feel that it's, we've gotten our return on investment from that every year?
I believe so. I do probably have more contact with them than most of the council people, but one of the things that I'm looking for this year is grant writer help because they have Lion Bear, who is a part of the SEDP, and they are available to help their investors write grants, certainly for a fee, but it's a lower fee than if we were not members of the SEDP. We have already, Megan and I spoke with Ashley from Lion Bear and did just an interview, giving her the information about what we would be looking for and so on. We did reach out to her right after the tornado. At that time, there just wasn't anything that she could find, but that would be one area where we do anticipate some help anyway. I hope.
Did she give you a fee breakdown or anything or a?
No, we didn't.
Any kind, nothing?
We didn't.
Mr. Cheers, it was similar to what we paid?
I can't think of his name.
James Hisong that we had for a while. Probably, I'm hoping it would be less than that, probably.
Should be because of this membership.
Exactly.
But I'm asking, we don't know.
We don't know. I don't think it, certainly, I wouldn't expect that it would be any higher than what we were paying.
I think with James Hisong, we paid a, like a retainer almost.
Right.
Up front. If I understand correctly, we don't pay a retainer because of the relationship with SEDP. We would just be charged for the activity of writing a grant, you know, per grant.
I know, Jamie, we did that. It was like a retainer.
Yeah.
But then wasn't a year or two later, he went just hourly or something?
Right. They changed.
Yeah.
Because of his work situation.
The way he, right.
The other thing that, have you been involved with SEDP that I can think of, correct me if I'm wrong, Sue, was that though it's somewhat, I won't say stagnant, but not in the forefront right now, was his, the city was working with the township relative to potential long-term water expansion plan.
Right.
You know, the SEDP folks, Brett, Brett, I forget his last name, were instrumental in helping to pull that internally, the other stuff.
Yes. And he actually wrote that grant for us. That was before they were affiliated with Lion Bear.
Right.
So Brett took a lot of time doing that and submitting it and then getting the feedback and then rewriting it the next year and getting the, so. And anytime there's a question of what's available or what can we do about this or that, they're always available to call, and that's nice to us.
I move that we approve the 2024 renewal with SEDP to the partner level for an amount not to exceed $1,000, and authorize a mayor and/or city clerk to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we'll just need to fill that form out, Shirley. They've actually held a couple of meetings here. They're holding one here in March. And moving on then to new business item number four. This is the budget meeting dates that are suggested, but certainly not written in stone. I asked you all to look at these dates to see if you had conflicts. And if we need to change a date, that's what we need to do. And we can always change a date if something comes up. But just so we have some dates to plug into our calendars, I'd like to know for sure these all work for everybody.
Well, I know, Megan, you had a concern or like a hard deadline. I didn't think it'd be done by this time, you said.
The department heads will have everything to sue by the 15th, so as a council, we shouldn't plan to meet any time before then.
Before that?
Yeah.
I remembered something. I know the note there, but I just wanted to refresh.
After that, I'm okay, other than I'll be out of country the last week of March.
So if I'm not understanding correctly, we need to set a date from 3:15 to 3:21 for a work session.
We need to decide if we want to have a work session after the budgets are turned in to me, but before the 4th of April. We don't have to. I mean, we've done it both ways since I've become mayor.
They're going to be gone. I'm the 21st, so I don't know. Um, I think. I still aren't sure if you were lucky.
I, I'm not certain on the 21st.
So we'll just plan on Megan being gone the 21st through the 30th?
I guess just the way I read this is it says 3:15, after 3:15, and then 3:21, it says we should set another date if needed after 3:21.
Yeah, and that's because I wasn't real sure about, I didn't know then about Megan.
Okay.
So, yeah, we don't, saying that today, 2:15, we're going to set a date for a work session after 3:15 because that's when the department heads are supposed to have their budgets into me. But if we want to absolutely make sure Megan's here and available to us, it probably should be after the 30th, to be honest. So if we wanted to just cross out what that says about the 21st and just go to April 4th or sometime in that week.
I think last year we met like an hour or two before.
Before a council meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we could do that.
Which we have a scheduled council meeting on the 21st.
But Megan.
Megan.
Yes, I would.
Put it at the 4th.
Yeah, so we could do it on the 4th.
Yeah, it's our first one of the month. It's always a busy.
Did everybody make it if we were to say we were going to meet at 5:00 on the 4th?
Yep.
And give us two hours. I think that.
I can certainly try. I don't see why I wouldn't, but you never.
I understand you can't.
You never.
Protect a snowstorm or whatever.
Crystal ball's been broken for a while.
But that, you'd be back by then, Megan, and then.
And ready.
Hopefully.
You might get snowed in in Costa Rica, who knows? So 5:00, April 4th, a budget work session, and that will be before our regular council meeting.
Then we'll know if we need to have another one.
Then we'll know if we need to have another one. Yeah, okay.
At 5?
5:00. Once, just so you know, if you haven't been through this before, once council says, yep, this is what we proposed as a budget, then it gets presented to the public. It's published to the public. Public has opportunity to look at. We set a public hearing date, and that's typically during a council meeting, but it could be a separate meeting. And then after that, if we're still ready for the budget, then we could go ahead and approve it. But if changes have to be made, then it has to be, you know, delayed a little bit. But our deadline is always the end of May. We have to have it approved by the end of May, or we all get locked in here until it's done.
We have another week between the 4th and the 18th, so if we have to after the 4th, say we could get an agreement on everything or whatever, we can come sometime that week.
Right. I think it gives us plenty of time, at least looking at it now.
The council will get this before, like, we'll get it on the 15th, right?
I get it on the 15th of March.
You'll get it probably the first.
Okay.
It'll be in your inbox.
So we'll have a couple of days before the two-hour meeting.
Yeah.
You work through it. Okay.
If it's completely done before I leave for vacation, you'll get it early, but.
So April 4th?
April 4th.
Five.
Five o'clock.
Will you be showing us what the budget was the previous year period?
Yep, so my, my budget worksheet is a big, like, legal-sized piece of paper. I always have prior year, current year's budget, if there's any amendments, what the amended budget is, activity to date, and then I project what I think the end of the year will be. And then I often give you proposed next year, and there's notes that say, let's say this line, it says $20,000, and last year it was only $5,000. This year it's $20,000 because of X, Y, Z.
Okay.
So.
So that's what we'll have to look at. She'll have, she'll get that put together before we meet on the 4th, and you'll all get that to look over. And then she will be here.
Document of numbers. They'll be, some of it is just document of numbers. These are what they are, but.
Yes, it's very, very good. I mean, it's different than we used to get, and we all who were part of it before like it much better now. It's easier to understand. So Megan will be here the 4th, though, so if you have questions about that, then she will be here. And we could maybe have supper. We could have some sandwiches or something, I think.
That's a nice idea.
We've been talking about.
You can have a hot latte if you'd like, but no, we cannot have supper.
We'll work on the other thing, but, yeah, I think you better eat before you come. That just works.
Okay.
All right. Okay, then. So that's all set for now. Thank you.
Do we have to move that or anything?
I'm sorry.
Do we have to make a motion?
No. We do not. It's just something we have to agree to do.
But if we do have to post it publicly, that there'll be a budget workshop.
Correct.
Because of the meeting of the whole council.
Right, because the public can come to that, so. Megan and Shirley will work on that. It has to be posted, and that there, we'll be doing that. So we'll just post the April 4th, 5:00 workshop for the public. Okay. The next thing I'd like to ask you about is the donation signs that we put up in front of Carl's. Donations have just dead, still stopped now for about a month or so. So I'm just wondering, do you all feel that it's appropriate time to take that sign down?
That sign and probably the paper copies that have been posted in a few places, we probably want to take those down as well.
Okay. That, I do need a motion on. We've got one here for us.
I move that we have the DPW remove the disaster relief donation sign from display on Main Street and other locations that it may have been posted.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike, to add, to also remove any signs from other locations, such as the website, the Carl's, any other place it may have been posted.
I think we've got one at Codette's Hardware that I saw the other day. I'm not sure if we had one at the library or not, but.
We'll check that out. So we have a motion on the table by Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, number six on our new business is to possible approval of a resolution to set public hearing. We're not approving the resolution. Please don't misunderstand how that's worded. What we're being asked to approve tonight is a public hearing, to set a public hearing regarding a public safety special assessment.
When will we debate or discuss the amount?
Well, we did that last summer and came up with $100 and 90. Well, we did that last summer and came up with a hundred and ninety dollars.
Yes, I, I read, I remember, I read your thing, and I remember that, and I resolved myself that we have to have it something, 'cause it's like, plus.
So, I mean, that's part of what we can do here tonight, yes.
As Barry Poppins said, spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. We just gave a big increase to SESA for the ambulance, hundred and ten, if you go one hundred and ninety, that's three hundred dollars, a special assessment for one year. I think we should go to the very minimal that we can do.
Hundred and ninety.
Hundred and fifty. Or less.
Well, Megan and, Megan and I looked at a hundred and fifty, and I'll let her.
You have your provisions for an incremental increase.
Yeah.
And, and I know SESA has been talking, um, about asking for an assessment for new equipment. We're gonna assess people to death. We have to be cognizant of, not everybody has, you know, bank accounts overflowing. You know, whatever you wanna say, that's, I, it's, it's a lot. We, we got pushback. I know we got pushback from people of a hundred and ten dollars. Right, Megan? Did people call and complain that, what is this?
It was a handful.
Yeah.
It's not like, it, you know, a handful of people.
Yeah, there was an interpretation, kind of, kind of water bill, I mean, and some, some guy triggered, which is not true, but.
No.
You were, I didn't understand what you were saying.
Someone said that, you know, the water bill goes up because of the trash and because of the new special assessment. It's just a misinterpretation.
Yeah, oh, I see.
My point is, is to, I'm just kind of echoing, I kind of agree with Bob on that, and that point is, you know, everyone's got an actual three hundred bucks a year. I can, I can understand that.
It is, and when you think about as, as the year, it, it feels like a lot more, and I absolutely understand what you're saying. My husband and I live on a retirement income. That, that's all we have. Uh, social security doesn't go a whole long ways.
My, my bank account overflowing was not directed to you.
No.
It was just a general comment, that's all. I just, you know, I, I read through your notes that you gave us from last summer. This is the same debate we had at SESA when I knew a hundred and ten isn't enough. But it got us, it'll get us to a point where in five years we'll be okay. SESA was a different situation because they had lack of planning. They didn't see the trees through the forest. The city has a little bit better planning, much better than SESA, this and this.
Yes.
But, um, we need to try to be real considerate of our residents, that's all.
And I'm absolutely in, in favor of that, but we also need to recognize that the city has no way to increase our income to cover the increase in spending that we're forced to have.
Our only, our only recourse to that, I'll make the comment, is, is reduced budgets. That's the only recourse. And I told you, I, what, what I lead up, I've come to resolve myself that we have to do something. All I'm saying is that, 'cause on your notes, a hundred and fifty gives you a surplus of thirty-some thousand dollars. That a hundred and ninety gives you a surplus of seventy-some thousand dollars. So we can get by with a surplus of thirty thousand. We don't need the hundred and ninety. It's needs and wants. We need X. We want Y. That's all.
Megan, could you address the, 'cause you and I had a discussion one day about a hundred and fifty versus a hundred and ninety. Could you have that same discussion?
Pam, I don't have someone's copy of what you were given.
What we were given?
Though.
There you go.
Oh, this, yeah.
Right, I think we, we started at a one fifty thirty unit. Like you said, it gives us the extra thirty-five. Um, full disclosure, a lot has changed since we did this last year. I, I think going along with the budget, there is potential to look at, is the one ninety. I, I, can you set a special assessment that says we won't go above one ninety, and in the first year you assess it at like something less than that? Is that how that, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with.
No, what you decide to set it at is what it is.
It's not up to, it's.
It's not an up to amount, it's, it's an amount.
Okay. Um, so seventy thousand doesn't really get you very far.
No, none of, none of these numbers, I mean, I understand. I, I really do. It's, it's, again, the sugar thing. It's hard to swallow. We need to do something. You know, we just had a tornado we can't afford, so I know we have to help that. But I just know from my own personal expenditures, you know, the hundred and ten assessment for SESA. Not saying it wasn't necessary, 'cause I supported it ardently. And then we wanna do another hundred and ninety, that gives three hundred bucks in a year. And we just make this a little bit more palatable for everybody, that's all.
How much is a hundred and ninety a month, um, over a year? Is it, what did you tell me, sixteen dollars?
Plus and sixteen, maybe.
It, it, palatable is a good word. It's hard to swallow, but is it possible? I think sixteen dollars a month is possible.
But I don't know anyone's situation, if you have a mortgage. Your mortgage goes up more than sixteen dollars a month because you have to have X amount of dollars in your escrow.
Right.
So it's not sixteen dollars, it's more, probably like twenty-five dollars. So that's all, I, I, I don't know who has mortgages. I have a mortgage. I guarantee you it's gonna go up. It's already gone up in the last four or five years, it's gone up a thousand dollars in a year, not a month. So just because of fees and taxes and whatever, so insurance, everything goes up. You know, we get a little raise and everything goes up, so it's just the way it works.
I did prepare this sheet that I passed out, and I, I'll just touch on it and then open the floor back up for more discussion. The city projects that could potentially be accomplished, or at least planned for, if more funds were available, are what's in this sheet. And it's been made available through the state of Michigan for a special assessment to be, uh, charged to cover police expenses. So by taking a portion of the police budget and paying that with a special assessment, it frees up that much money in our general fund. And I, and I know you guys all understand that, but because we are being recorded, I just wanted to make that clear. So there are things in the City of Perry master plan, um, to, uh, projects for the future. And those could be things that we could actually plan for, because we would know that we're gonna have some money available. Um, matching funds for grants is one of those ways to do that. And up to this point, whenever we've had grants that require matching funds, we have not been able to apply for them because we didn't have any matching funds. You mentioned the tornado, and it would, would be helpful to have the extra money in there to help cover the cost of rebuilding the DPW building. Although that really is coming together very well as far as the money's concerned. I think we're gonna be in pretty good shape with that. We could actually cover the balance of the increased cost for the security project. 'Cause that security project, one of the estimates were first obtained was one amount, and then when they, the new estimates came out after we actually had the money, it was more than twice as much. So we had to cut back on what we could do, but maybe we could actually complete the project rather than piecemealing it out. We could actually develop a City of Perry capital improvement plan. I mean, we're required by the state to have a capital improvement plan, um, and it's always been very vague. But we could probably come up with one that actually had dates and when we're gonna do this and how we're gonna do it. If we knew we were gonna have money there. The City of Perry parking lots and alleys need to be repaired and resurfaced. Road funds can't be used for that. So this would be another source of funds that we could fix that. And one of the things that came up over and over again on those sticky notes when McKenna did their surveys was bike paths and walking trails. And that could be money used for that as well, not just parks money, even though, you know, that's been talked about too. So those are the ideas that Megan and I and Shirley came up with, that the money could be used for if we had money in the general fund. Megan, did you wanna add anything to that?
Um, I was gonna re-respond to a question earlier. I've refreshed my brain a little with one of these spreadsheets. So in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that we approved, we approved a thirty thousand dollar general fund deficit to cover all the expenses. And I think we can all agree that we've pretty much honey-pitched as much as we could, um, for what we wanted to do this year. The revenue for this year included the final fifty thousand from the ARPA funds. So that's an automatic out-the-door next year. We don't have that revenue anymore. So when we first started doing these scenarios, we looked at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and just copied and pasted it on twenty-four, twenty-five. Take out all the grants, take out the COPS grant, take out the ARPA funds, um, and increased all expenses by just a generic five percent. If nothing else changed between the year we're in now and next year, we'd be facing a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar deficit.
Can you clarify what all, what, in this one point three eight five million, what are those expenses typically?
Literally everything in the general fund, um, salaries, uh, the police department budget, trash, um, ambulance assessment. So while the residents pay for those things, it's also an expense out, so it's money in, money out, dollar for dollar. But it'll make much more sense when you can see a full budget.
Sure, yeah.
Um, it's, it's lighting, it's all the street lighting in the city.
Insurance?
Insurance, employment insurance, uh, our, our liability insurance, it's.
Employers health insurance.
Health insurance and liability, so the city's insurance policy is over forty thousand a year. It's vehicle maintenance, it's, it's money out to motor pool and office equipment for, it's just, it keeps us running.
It's really in the bills when you look at them.
It's all that stuff in the bills.
Yeah, there are, thanks. Sue touched on the master, master plan. One of the things that you're gonna see when we do get a draft copy to look at, and it came up in the surveys, it came up on the sticky notes, is the sidewalks. We had conversation about, so, stay to the sidewalks, and where don't we have sidewalks, where do we need to repair sidewalks, and the, the trails and things. I mean, it'd free up the ability to not completely go in and fix all the sidewalks or some of the other things, but it would at least get us a move in the, you know, right direction.
And we could design a plan to repair or replace sidewalks over however many years that might take if we knew we had this much money that we could work with in one year, and it would be there the next year, and it would be there the next year. Not like ARPA money that shows up and then it doesn't come back, you know, it's something we can plan on and build on.
If you remember, I'm the one that brought up, uh, at the budget, that we were losing fifty thousand dollars, 'cause our budget was augmented by the ARPA. I, I'm well aware of the issue. It just, it's hard, it's palpable. Um, that's all. It's, it's just really hard to swallow for people, 'cause it's not gonna be the end of it. We have to have other, we need, the city has to have money, we have, it hasn't. The revenue doesn't meet what we need. But are we, do we know that our assessor is doing what she needs to do to get everything so we have people who have building permits to put siding on or whatever? You know, does that increase? I know we can't chase closings and that kinda stuff, but we should be able to get revenue. It's, it'd be incremental. People who improve their houses, you know, the value on, you know what I'm saying? I don't know, I'm.
I'm confident she does, just in the way she works.
The permits come in.
I mean, I.
Don't come in.
Go to her desk, you can go see her files, and it's like, you can go look at.
I know, I know, I know for sure, one, hundred percent, got to make, uh, there's two, but one, I can see how she'd miss it when it sold and never got. So that person, I actually know the person, I, I never had this conversation with them, but I know that they're paying half of what the house is valued at. What, I mean, the house is valued, half of what it would sell at today on the open market. Nothing I can do, you can't do, anything you do about that, you can't go chasing that backwards.
It'd be based on what it sold at then.
But it was, it was one of those, not, what do they call it? It's not under the table, it's just not, it wasn't a public sale.
Was it between family?
No.
You can't chase sale prices.
And you can't go, now, you, once it, what is it, unlocked?
Uncapped.
Uncapped. It wasn't uncapped, and you can't go back and uncap something after whatever time. It's, there's a.
There's a limit of time.
Correct, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, and it would be curious to know why it didn't uncap, and Megan's asking the correct questions, if it was a sale between family or.
No, it wasn't. It was, it was a unique situation, circumstance, but it should've been uncapped, you know? And, and we're human, people miss it. Our last assessor may have missed it too, you know, some of you. Things that we're not in, we're all infallible. We make mistakes. That's not my point. I just wanna make, are we getting everything we should be getting, collecting?
I believe we are, yeah. We, we do get applications for permits to.
There's not every permit is gonna increase the value of your house.
That's right.
It's like, you know, I changed some shingles on my garage, I got a permit, it doesn't value, the value doesn't go up 'cause I fixed the roof, you know, shingles, so.
And I'm glad you said that, because that's true. It's hard to convince people of that sometimes. But yes, that, that's true. Other discussion?
Yeah. I'm not trying to belittle the fact that we've got, an increase is an increase, Bob, regardless, you know, when you do the simple math. You know, one fifty versus one ninety, or the numbers they're throwing out, that's three dollars and thirty-five cents a month differential. That's, I might bought a lot of coffee at Big B's, but I know I didn't get a coffee.
No, yeah, they're five dollars. But the only, the only, my only point I was trying to make at that difference is the residents, it, it may not be able to do that. We may have to do a hundred and ninety, okay? Our residents are taxpayers, so we're trying to serve them, 'cause like, you know, what are they doing with that money? And I know no one wants to follow social media, but that is the new town crier. That is where people go on and complain. They don't come here and complain, they go on there and complain. So as much as you dislike it, I'm right with you, you have to pay attention to that and hear it. Because that's where they're staying, where, you know, in the seventeen-hundreds, where they, they got on a soapbox out in the middle of the town square and started complaining, right?
That's right.
That's, they go on this and do that now.
But many, many of the things that are posted there are not correct.
Sure, they're, they're untrue, so, yeah.
Yeah.
The people who stood on soapboxes probably were, their boxes were probably not true as well.
Right, exactly.
So.
I, I hope that people would come to a public hearing, a public meeting, and ask those questions and ask what it actually is. Where does the money go? And the budget coming up too, that, you know, they can come to that and see where it goes, 'cause it's all spelled right out.
I agree. That's how I ended up on this seat, is 'cause I came to a, a budget assessment meeting and said, you know, made my peace. And like, you know, you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution, so.
So here you are.
To all your problems.
Yeah, to that point, I would think one of the reasons I brought sidewalks up, I'm not saying all the money would go to sidewalks, don't get me wrong. But it, that becomes potentially one visible, you know, place that we could be looking at. And that's one of the things that the community that have responded with the surveys and posted notes and things, very loudly said, let's do something with our sidewalks. So we would be responding to at least a portion of the public.
There's a, a, a great need for those kinds of things, capital improvement, more park, you know, we did do an assessment, we had, we did that too. It was minimal, but we did do an assessment for the parks. So it's, that's all, I'm just, it's very hard to swallow, and I have resolved myself that we have to do something. We can't do, you know, I think the last time we talked about this, I was pretty adamant, that we can't, we can't do anything, just because it was emotions. So once you stop and think about it, you have to do something. All I'm saying is, can we do the very bare minimum and then try to? Because we're gonna increase it, and we're gonna have to do the five percent every year, the maximum amount, just like SESA's, we're gonna have to do the maximum amount. I've been through all these numbers. It has to, to get to where it has to be to get the money, that it, it needs to operate. And I think the general public do, does not understand what it costs to operate things. And I think the general public does not understand what it costs to operate things.
It's hard, it's hard to understand because it changes every second. And, you know, every bid that we've gotten over the last year has doubled or tripled every time it gets close to the time to do the work.
And I think the other thing that I know Megan sent out with a couple of tax bills is how much of the money that goes in taxes, I'm not talking assessment, just lump sum for all of the various things. How small a percentage of that actually stays with the city to do what we're talking about doing?
Oh, I know it's small. And I know it's not a tax per se, but it is a tax because I pay it on my taxes.
It's dollars.
Okay, so I, you collect, the city collects X dollars and they collect the tax. We all look at it that way. I know it's not a, technically it's not a tax, it's an assessment. But your average Joe doesn't analyze it that way. It's a tax. I don't, it's a tax. I understand it, I comprehend it, I just, it's a tax. So that's all. Said my piece.
I don't know if it's possible, if we decide to go ahead and set a public hearing for this special assessment. We do have to have Megan and the assessor, I mean, work together to create a special assessment district and come up with the numbers, how many households there are and how it'll be charged and what the actual per household assessment would be based on a total. I wonder if we could have two prepared? If we could have one for 150 and one for 190 so that it would be obvious how that would shake out.
Instead of doing all that work, can we take the?
Ambulance assessment.
We have a number from the ambulance.
Okay.
Can we just do the math that way and see?
I think it was like 1,040 units, but we've already added homes since.
Correct. It's a fluid number. But we have a, we have a, we're going to get within 5% of that number.
It's about 1,040 units.
Because we can extrapolate that out and see where we're at. And as much as I hate to say it, maybe 190 isn't enough either.
Yeah.
You're going to hold it in place, isn't that right, Bob?
Well, no. Once you do the math, I don't know. I don't want zero. How much do I pay, not pay? But the reality is, no, that's not true. But I'd rather pay 150 if we can do 150 than 190 and take three or four years to get it up to 190. And, you know, yes, just like Sesa, it was 110, it was a big argument. I don't think any of you were there when we had these discussions.
I was there.
I don't want to say argument, but there was people who had been on the board for quite a while, or still are, that now realize that my argument wasn't moved. It was set in real numbers and this is where we're at. So we settled on this 110 was a compromise. But with knowing that we have to do the increases every year to get to a certain point, and I think if I remember, it's four years before we really get over that and we're in the black.
Yeah, and I do remember that. They were saying 130 and others were saying 80 or 90. And so it finally, like you said, was a compromise at the 110. And I'm not saying there wouldn't be a compromise, but I would like people to have as much information as we can give them before the public hearing. So as a part of any resolution that is done tonight to set the public hearing, we also need to have the decision made as to what numbers should be used to post the public information. Is that not correct? I mean, are you remembering what the steps are for that? We don't do it often enough that I remember, but.
Well, you're, after this, we set the public hearing, then Eileen. Sets the district? Yes, sets the district. I have to.
But she has to have an amount to set that district weight. So that's what I'm saying. If we can, if we can do two different numbers, that might be helpful.
Can it say not to? We're eyeing the 190 right now. So can you say not to exceed? And then when the public hearing comes, if you choose a lesser amount.
Then we have to publish the amount for this hearing?
I think that we're skipping, I think we're skipping. This is, this is just saying she is creating a special assessment, so I don't see why she couldn't do both, determine what the amount's going to be. I think the next resolution will be the one saying how much it is. Yeah, so she's just setting the special assessment district.
This is giving the assessor the authority to come up with a district?
Yes.
Because until the district is like to the parcel, your amount can change, you might, may change. So she doesn't really need a dollar amount? She just determines how many parcels will be assessed?
I don't think right here she does, right?
Okay.
I don't know. It seems like we'd have to have an amount. I know Sesa had to come up with an amount.
Is it a two meeting process?
Yeah, it's a two meeting.
So I think it's the second meeting that you.
I think it's the second meeting. So I have to send out notice, I have to mail notices to everyone saying that we set a special.
Public hearing.
District, and there's a public hearing. And then the next meeting will be another, or the next time there's a public hearing, two public hearings, the next one will say how much it's going to be. And then I think in that second notice I send out, it tells you how much.
What the amount was.
What the amount was, yeah.
Okay.
Right, I think the first notice is just strictly, we're.
There's an election. Yes, for that assessment.
Motions of we just need to determine the time.
The date of the public hearing.
The meeting, yeah, it's not anything to do with the money part right now.
Any other discussion about this? So the possible approval of a date for the public hearing is what we're looking for in a resolution tonight.
What does Eileen need for preparation time to be able to?
I kind of say minimal because I think we're going to use the ambulance district as the same district. So it's just verifying new homes that have been added since that was set.
What's our public notice?
What's our?
Requesting that for signing.
How long does it have to be out? How long does this have to be out?
10 days, I think I have to send it out before, so.
Could we set it for our next council meeting?
Um, well.
Yes, it's right here, the records, at least 10 days before the date you set here.
I would, I would ask if we could do it the 21st because I am having that election the last weekend.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I'm still kind of nervous about that, so. I want to make sure we get through that.
Right, that's two, that's right, you'll have that week to recoup.
Well, it's just to get through the day, so.
No, I get it, that's the week before.
Yeah.
So then our next council meeting will be the 21st of March.
Yep. Yeah, because I would have to have it out on the 26th. And I just, I'm sorry, I just think that's just too much.
Well, it's just a minimum, 10 days, you could have that, you could have this notice off longer than 10 days.
Oh, yeah. So if she could have it out by the 11th and the meeting is the 21st.
Right.
Oh, you're talking about March. Oh, I'm still waiting at the end of 3rd. So I'm sorry, I'm just saying, I can fit this in in the next.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
If you're writing the notices in the mail by the 11th and the public hearing was the 21st.
Oh, yeah, for sure, I can do that.
So the 21st date of March 2024 during the council meeting, which then the public hearing is at 7:15 that day.
I can read this one if we're all set. I remember that we approved the following resolution whereas the Perry City Council has determined that a special assessment is necessary and proper to defray the cost to the city of providing public safety service to the parcels of property within the city benefited by public safety service. Therefore, the City of Perry does hereby propose to create a special assessment district of the property benefited by said public service consisting of all improved parcels of property within the Perry city limits. The City of Perry does hereby determine to hold the hearing on the estimate of the cost of public safety service and on the question of creating a special assessment district on the property to be especially benefited. Said hearing shall be held on the 21st day of March 2024 at 7:15 p.m. The city assessor is directed to complete the plans and estimates for services to be funded by special assessment. The city clerk is directed to mail notice of said hearing by first class mail to each owner of or party in interest in the property located within the proposed special assessment district whose name appears upon the local tax assessment records of the city at least 10 days before the date of said hearing. The city clerk is further directed to publish in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, a notice of said hearing. Said publication shall be published not less than five days before the hearing.
We have a motion from Jacob. I need a second for that. Mike, seconded by Mike. All those in favor that motion to be signified are saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we will notify the city assessor. City clerk is directed to mail, so you are aware of that. So that brings us to the end of our agenda as far as new business is concerned. Do we have any other business that may come before council at this time? Larry?
Yeah, I think we talked briefly about it last time, and that is setting the dates for community wide yard sale.
Yeah.
I think we generally talked about the third weekend in May. And those dates would be if we agreed, May 17th through the 19th, that's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And that's pretty consistent with what we've done in the last few years in terms of that.
I think it's always been the weekend after Mother's Day.
And it turns out to be that.
So Mother's Day is the 12th, so yes, the 17th, 18th, 19th would then be the citywide yard sale. And then we talked about the cleanup.
Yeah, I propose that historically we've had a cleanup activity following the yard sale activity. I propose that we look at the weeks of May the 20th and May the 27th, except Memorial Day falls on the 27th. But those two weeks, we'd arrange, or ask Kevin, the DPW, to arrange to have the dumpsters available like we had last year for post yard sale and any other cleanup that people within the city want to utilize those for.
So pretty much it would be the last two weeks of May?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that way if people are away on vacation over Memorial Day, they've got time before or after to take advantage of that.
And this is just something you have to agree on? You don't, do you have to?
We don't have to have a motion on that. We just need to make sure we let Kevin know about making arrangements on those dumpsters, getting them in and out. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had one weekday that we stayed open later. And we had a DPW somebody or other stay just so we had that monitored. Remember that? So we'll have to do that again. Any other business council that we need to discuss tonight? Any other public comments? Any agenda items for next meeting? Something came up today and I said we'll have to put that on for next time. Oh, we have, I think just committee report that was. And that meeting was today, so that had to wait, so. Anything else? Anybody know that we should have on the agenda for next time?
I have a couple things on it.
Okay.
I have some suggestions.
What you got?
I don't know.
Whatever Shirley's listed upstairs.
I've already heard the list.
I'll find that, Tim, I mean, we have a Sesa, official Sesa report.
Oh, that'd be great.
It's been a while.
Yeah, we are supposed to have those once a year from Sesa, the library.
It should be born once a year, but that's.
And CADA, CADA, SADA. Miller Robinson. That would be good.
Things are going pretty good over there right now, so.
That's great, great to hear. I know that's taken a lot of the board's time, a lot more the last 12 months than ever before. We appreciate that. Anything else? If not, at 8:04, we are adjourned.